This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, she needs the night off. Too long for two hours.
Five thirty. No call?
Me up.
Commissioner Xerger?
Here.
Commissioner Jenny? Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Mayor Spelling?
Here. Those who wish to, please join us in prayer. Ladies and legends.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, as we gather here to work towards a common goal, we ask for your presence to guide and direct our decisions. We know your will is good for all members of our community. We also pray for our police, our firefighters, our city workers and hospital workers for the safety in the work they do. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Commissioner Jennings is...
Commissioner Jennings is on his way.
Any deletions?
There is none.
There is none.
Seeing that, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the agenda as written. I'm sorry.
Is it moved and seconded? We approve the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Recognition of visitor.
Recognize Officer Madison Pickett for her recent promotion to the rank of Master Police Officer.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This evening I have the privilege of introducing Officer Madison Pickett who has earned a promotion to Master Police Officer. Officer Pickett joined Ark City Police Department in December of 2018 and graduated from the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center May 10th of 2019. The past four years Officer Pickett has been assigned to a patrol shift and is currently assigned to the 9th, 2nd shift. A minimum of three years of police experience is required in order to test for this position. The testing process included a written examination in order of the interview board consisting of four supervisors within the department and an interview with the police chief. And of course, Officer Pickett did outstanding in all three of these testing phases. Master Police Officer Pickett will continue to work in patrol but will be participating in field training of newly hired officers now. At this time, I would like to congratulate Master Police Officer Pickett on her promotion and thank her for her commitment to ACPD and the community. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Spin the agenda.
I make a motion. We approve it. Consider the agenda as written. Second.
Been moved and seconded. There we approve it. Consider the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. All business.
Item number one, a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to transfer the current funds balance in the Legacy Foundation for Friends of Wilson Park Fund to our Kansas City.
So after the last meeting, you asked us to check into whether about using, moving those funds in two different ways. Some for pickleball, some for the groups to take care of the flowers in the park. So when I reached out to Legacy, we found out that there is a Ark City Beautification Foundation Fund. They previously had their own 503 and they folded that up and they put what was left into a endowment fund at the Legacy. So basically with the endowment fund, those funds stay there forever and they can, and anyone that wants to do something with beautification wise in Wilson Park could draw from those funds and...
How much is in that fund?
I know there's $1,500 in it. So there is a fund. Some of your options could be, we'll definitely communicate that with that group and let them know that those dollars are available. You could still pull a little bit off of the Friends of Wilson's Park and add it to that fund to help with that as well. You go ahead and put the full amount in the pickleball. So that's some of the options you have.
Let me ask you this question. Is there that, you know, before they, you know, they were talking like, you know, it was too late, October 10th. But were they double the money? I mean, have they doubled it in?
No, I think that program's over now. They reached their goal and that ended on the 10th.
Okay.
So...
Go forward. Yes, please.
My name's Sam Olmosby. Yeah, the endowment, the matching endowment was for 19 funds and that wasn't one of them. But I just want to make clear that we do have a lot of things going on. Again, we want to do the right thing for the park. So I'm not against moving some funds over. But these funds weren't even known about by that group and we're working hard. You know, we've got matching funds from Rice Cali. We've got a lot of different projects. And I gotta be honest, every dollar counts for us. I'm just of the position that utilizing the park or beautifying the park is also important. It doesn't bring people necessarily. So that's all I'm saying.
So as an endowment, can they pull the money out or do they get interest off the money that's in?
Yeah, so basically how that works is there's this core amount of money that stays in there and this is, these are designed to be kind of forever funding sources. So yes, that certain amount stays in there forever and they can draw off the interest on the endowment.
Do you have any idea what kind of interest they'd be able to draw off a year?
Yeah, I don't know what's... What I found out was that that fund existed, that there was opportunity for the in the flowers to access it, how much would be available at any given time.
So they have, I'm sorry.
My only understanding of that is that 1,500 is that's been grown over two or three years where they did not use the funds. So I'm not pretending that every year they're gonna get 1,500 out of this endowment. Probably, just a wild guess, is maybe 500 bucks a year. And it depends on, you know, the financial markets and what they can draw. So without any clarification, clarify that. I'm just speculating.
I know when they approached us over a year ago to beautify the park and said that they were going to take care of everything. They didn't, they didn't, they said they would do it themselves. And that's where my, now they want us to fund them. It's kind of...
Well, this isn't us funding and this is donations funding them. So this isn't city funding. This is people's private money funding it, I guess. Go ahead.
Address?
Yes.
I'd like to reiterate that that source no longer lives here. That funding that she was providing is no longer in the equation. Whatever money becomes available could secure the beautification of the Docking Gardens and Wilson Park in general for the next 10 years. I'm suspecting just based on past experience that to maintain that garden as it is is probably going to take a couple hundred dollars a year in supplies, equipment, new plants. Things die, you have to replace them. If we had access to a couple of thousand dollars, maybe three, that would guarantee the continued success of the gardens for the foreseeable future.
Has anybody...
Stop, stop, sir. Please tell us your name, where...
Jerry Strider.
An address.
I live 608 North First Street, right by Wilson Park. Has anyone of you Commissioners walked through that garden? That flower garden? It's beautiful. They're out there every day. They're working hard on it. You guys are gonna give $15,000 to the city manager's wife and a group of 35 people for pickleball.
Excuse me, sir. Sorry.
This is private funding. This is not city funded money.
Well, all I'm saying is Wilson Park is the jewel of this city. So why not support it? Because it's a beautiful park and it's right there on Main Street. Why not come up with the money to fund them? That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
So excuse me just a minute before we go any farther. As Mayor, I will not tolerate anybody saying things against our Commissioners, our City Manager or their relatives. I will ask you to leave if they choose to do that again. Thank you.
So my question comes back to again, how much money can they access out of Legacy on the endowment? If they, you know what, if they can't get to it...
Are you talking about the 14,000 or the 15?
No, the 1,500.
Well, it's just the interest off the money is all you can get.
The interest off 1,500 is not gonna be...
1,500 is what they have that's above the endowment dollars. It's not...
How much are the endowment dollars?
I don't know what the endowment dollars are.
And you guys have 14,800 to go towards the available now.
I would hope that the people that are doing the beautifications would be talking with Legacy and find those numbers out to know because they haven't used the 1,500 for, I think, like three years. So my...
So there's a level and then this is what's available?
That's kind of... Is that 1,500 be that interest earned over what's in there?
So they can get to it?
Yes.
So this, the funding of the Friends of Wilson Park funding was not dedicated to one source. It wasn't dedicated to one project. It was general of the entire park.
I think it was set up to help fund the master.
I agree, yeah. Well, it was, but my point is it wasn't meant for tennis courts or for playground equipment or for just one thing. I mean, the easy thing to do is they say need 3,000. Give them 1,500 of that and then give them the remaining 13,358. And then they had the 1,500 of that. Funding is still going to two aspects within the park design. It's going to two different things. That would be the simple, easy way to move on. It gives the pickleball a good source of their funding and it also gives the beautification the funding they would need to.
You read my mind.
That's what, I mean...
You wanna make that a motion?
So we'll put the portion peeled off for, into this beautification?
Yes, into that so it can be used, yeah.
It'll add to that endowment and that'll just kind of help that being...
Yes.
Well, if it's in the endowment, they can't get to it.
The interest they can, but it goes, those interest is made off of it, yes.
But you can put that 1,500 with that 1,500, they could draw that.
Yeah, I'll find out how that would...
Let's find out. But that'd give them $3,000, you know, that's...
That's what he's saying. I mean, $200 to $300 a year is what they need access to.
So in a year, that 1,500 will be, you know, a higher amount if it's not pulled out of, you know, it'll keep growing.
Right.
That 200, yeah.
I mean...
Yeah, pretty good.
The pickleball court is going to be, shoot, the pickleball court, I gotta work on that, is going to be where?
The dance court, Sarah.
No, 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 no. In what park?
Wilson.
Wilson.
Okay. The beautification group is concerned about funding for improvements where?
Wilson Park.
The Docking Gardens in Wilson.
So it sounds like we're talking about a bunch of friends of Wilson Park. Maybe we're overthinking this.
That's what I, yes.
I think that's what we're getting to. Instead of parsing it out, you know, and trying to laser it, it sounds like we're talking about several friends of Wilson Park. And as Commissioner Rogers said, there aren't, there aren't any fine print things that say this in Wilson Park, only for playground equipment, only for the choo-choo train, only for the, you know, it's all Wilson Park. So maybe there's a simpler path by bringing these friends who like to play pickleball and who like to make the park look very attractive from the Summit Street frontage and the other things that are managed. I think that's what your intimation was, Commissioner Rogers. And it seems like we're talking about a lot of friends of Wilson Park. And what's the easiest path to facilitate the success of all of them? To contribute to the success of, and still have money for the choo-choo train? So, yeah, anyway. What, whatever, I would say whatever it takes to get us there. Would you guys, would you leave? Would you guys be willing to be friends, the Friends of Wilson Park?
We will be willing to be friends, but I will just say one thing and that is that the endowment fund, I feel totally confident, will spin off 200 bucks a year just in the existing endowment. That's all they want, 200 bucks a year. Heck, I'll write the check. I don't care if it's for the next 10 years. That's ridiculous for us to fight over something like that. I don't want just... We need the momentum to get, you know, I've gotta have the number in my fund before we get any contractors to even think about coming to do this. And I need 50,000 by the end of the year to get the momentum to make this work in 2024. And by God, we're gonna do this. And one way or another, we're fighting hard and I'll come back in two weeks, four weeks and tell you every time and invite me, the progress we're making because this is important to Ark City. It really is. Towns all around, it's Wellington, Mulvaney, Winfield. Heck, New Kirkville will get, make work before we do if we don't get this going. That's all I can say.
Madam Mayor, could you query perhaps the city attorney to make sure that we're not tripping over ourselves and running past some statutory requirement in this?
Yeah, I don't believe that we are. I think we're okay.
Okay, so...
So in other words, we're talking about two separate funds?
That are already set up.
That are already set up. I don't think we have a problem.
So Commissioner Rogers, maybe with guidance from staff, you could make a motion that I'd love to second?
I would like to make a motion that with the help of staff and understanding that if we make a motion to, let me see, I want to authorize the, no, a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to transfer the current, or to transfer $1,500 in the Legacy Foundation from the Friends of Wilson Park to the Ark City Beautification Fund or whatever, whatever that name is. And then the remaining balance go to the Ark City Pickleball Fund, which would be 3, $13,358.32 if my math's correct.
Did you do that right?
I think so, or one motion.
One motion. Should we do two to get 1,500 to that and then another motion to give to the...
I prefer two motions.
I will do that. So my first motion will be...
Be clean.
Yeah.
Clean to say.
Two clean motions, all right. I would like to make a motion. We authorize the City of Arkansas Kansas City to transfer $1,500 in the Legacy Foundation from Friends of Wilson Park to the Ark City Beautification Legacy Fund or what, to the name of which it is with the help of city staff.
Second.
I have a question. Can we put that on the front end and not the back end? Or can you check on that? In other words, they've got...
Can they use that 1,500 if it's just gonna sit in there? That's, I think, the concern some of the Commissioners have, which I agree.
I'll find out. My guess is it probably goes to the, to the balance of the fund and then just to draw interest off of later. But I think that would probably be what would happen. This... Because in my, in my email...
Or do we want to...
...with Yasmin.
Do we want to retract that and just leave 1,500 in the Friends of Wilson Park Fund until we find out where that 1,500 would go?
Let's do that.
That might be the better way because we don't really...
There we go. That would be a good answer. So I will retract my motion.
I think... Withdraw the second?
So now I'd like to make a motion. Sorry, I should have thought that through. That we authorize the City of Arkansas Kansas City to transfer $13,358.32 in the Legacy Foundation from the Friends of Wilson Park to the Ark City Pickleball Fund. With the motion, or with the idea of researching that 15, yes.
I second the motion coming.
Any further comments?
I would exhort, I would encourage you all to be friendly with one another in the spirit of the Friends of Wilson Park. And then I feel confident that we have...
It'd be also nice to know about that 1,500 for the next meeting, where that goes, we can, we need to vote on that one.
My guess is it goes to the endowment and adds to that. Again, it just prolongs the future of that particular fund and beautification efforts. Kevin, did you get what you needed? Okay.
Is there any further discussion on current motion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Mr. Rogers would like to do a second motion. No.
Lot of motions. So we satisfied that agenda item?
Yeah, there's no more because I just, the idea is figure out where we note that 1,500 before we decide if we want to send it over or not. Yeah.
Bring it back if we...
Okay, we'll bring it back.
Jeff, tell him what we did. Does he live? Do you have his number?
I can give him my number. I know where he hangs out.
Okay.
Ready to move on to new business.
So under City Attorney Department, item number one, a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas Kansas City to approve a temporary extension of license premise at the Sandbar to allow a parklet hospitality area on public property located at 408 South Summit Street. And we have been working with Brandy Webb, who is the owner, owner of the Sandbar. And she answered my question. But basically, this is a kind of a trial and we've talked about having outdoor seating area, hospitality areas. So this parklet would be in the parking, three-part install section in front of her building, so an extension of that premise. And the state does allow for that to be a seating area. And so I do have her application and drawing if you'd like to see it that we will send into the state tonight if you do approve this. Pass that around.
They did the four feet.
Yeah, we did change to four feet. So I know you guys talked about this in work session. I was on, I didn't see it.
So will the state get it done before our...
It'll stay, yeah. She can have it for the four days, Wednesday through Saturday. So the state requires us to approve a resolution. And then there were quite a few conditions that Brandy has reviewed. I got with Larry and Randy almost.
What are the conditions?
The conditions, they're everything works under section one. So there's two things that we're looking for.
Is there anything new?
Yeah, the only thing that changed was that minimum two feet would change to four feet.
You know, we had that student saying, I don't know, with K-State, it was a K-State, South Dakota. And one of the things they said we looked at is how can we get downtown to be more attractive? And one way is to have outdoor seating in outdoor restaurants, outdoor dining. I know this is just a temporary and I know this little temporary model is not enough time to come to a conclusion long term as if this is gonna work, but at least gets the idea out there what could be a potential for outdoor restaurants or businesses to have an outdoor area that would be more permanent and obviously safer once we do establish districts or zones for the, that way they're not just quote roped off temporarily or whatever, but more safe. But I think it's a good start to at least look into it to see what it's like. And again, this is just temporary and it's only for three days of our call. But, and there'd be a lot more, I guess, that would have to go into it before it was ever finalized to make it a permanent thing. But I think it's a good start. And that study, going back to study, they said this is how you get people downtown. You have outdoor spaces for your citizens. That being said, do you want to make the motion? Yeah, I'd like to. I'll make a motion that we authorize the City of Arkansas Kansas City to approve a temporary extension of license premise at the Sandbar to allow a parklet hospitality area on public property located at 408 South Summit Street.
I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
So I have a question. Are we gonna do three or four since we're gonna do that?
Three or four parking spaces?
We talked Friday about three parking spots, but it was just a section also and we were concerned with PD that we should move it back to four. So it was a question of three parking spots or four parking spots? I know, that's trying to... Guys, if you want to make that amendment, I can make the adjustment.
I have no issue with four unless someone else, I mean, I'm... What would you prefer?
Well, we're bringing it back just for traffic. We were talking to PD. I don't want somebody to get hit by a car. That's the last thing I need. So we're expanding another parking spot.
So it was for three to four then?
Yes, just a little wider rather than...
So your square footage would be closer? Yes, understood.
Can we make an amendment on four leaning? Yeah, I'd make an amendment to that to allow for four parking spots if everyone's okay with that.
Got an amendment?
Yeah, I'd make that amendment to my motion.
All right. I'll second that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, first we'll proceed to vote on the amendment, which get from three parking places to four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Now to the main motion. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
I may be done making motions. I keep complicating everyone I've made tonight.
You're just getting your rhythm.
City Manager Department.
So under City Manager Department, item number one, a motion approving a bid for the purchase of taxable general obligation bond, series 24.
So Larry Cleveland Square with Friends and Financial. They got three bids in this morning and they've gone through and have selected the recommended bids. Let him explain it.
Yeah, you can have a handout Friday. So the basis is the bid tab received from three underwriters. Actually, the fourth one signed up, apparently didn't bid. But so we should see the interest rates for each of the maturities. This is a 15-year bond at the 23.9. You can see the interest rate for each maturity each year. Then each underwriter keeps a little bit of money as their profit. We calculate all that in to find the best bid at the very bottom line here. We calculate all that in to find the best bid, the very bottom line here, true interest cost, interest rate. It's how we determine what's the best bid for the city. And in this case, Central State's capital markets tick rate, as we call it, is 6.11%. Beat out the other two by over half a percent or so. Again, this is for $25,000, another taxable bond to purchase the land.
Five twenty-five?
Five fifteen, isn't it?
Yeah, exactly. We're advertising five twenty-five, and because of the better interest rate, then we estimate it, yes, we reduce the size for it to five fifteen. You can see that on page two and three. So pages two and three. The service manual for the 515,000 bond. The year 2024, the interest payment only portion is paid from the bond itself. Since we're already done your budget for 2024, you don't have to make any payments out of the city coffers. It comes, that's included, called a capitalized interest. And then you'll start making payments, the city will, in 2025 for the remaining 15 years, roughly 50,000 to 55,000 a year. Page four. On that page, this shows the sources initially signs. The bulk of it, of course, goes toward the project, and remaining funds go toward paying cost of issuance. The bonus interest for that first year. If you have any questions on the numbers, you have to answer them. Otherwise, they're at the bottom, there are the suggestions, which I think mirrors what you have in your agenda package. Basically, it's three motions, one to approve the best bid from Central States. And then a second and third motion. Second one is to approve the ordinance, and then the third, to approve the resolution authorizing the bonds.
If we decide to pay these off early, we, we, will we be penalized, will we?
No, there is a seven-year call feature, so you, at seven years, you can pay them off at that time.
Okay, just so I understand, the total use, we're going to get the five fifteen, and then, so that total is five sixteen, six sixty-eight, right?
Yeah, I was putting that in the tree up on the tree. So what, the underwriter turns around and sells these 515,000 bonds for 516,000, that's kind of the way they market them.
Right.
And yeah, so then you get that total of five sixteen. Actually, when they wire the money to the city on November 2nd, the underwriter will keep 6,180, their share, their fee. And so basically, five sixteen minus that 6,000, roughly 510,000 is the amount that will be wired to the city then. Then, yes, then you can expend that however you want. The 465 is for land purchase, which, 25,000. The city to pay. And then 19,000 is for cost of issuance, which is the tariff fee, bond council fee, and a few other fees that'll be.
So that's not in the fifteen, the five sixteenths? The 19,005 is not in the five sixteenths?
Yeah, that is included.
Isn't.
All the costs are included in the bond.
In the total five sixteen?
Yes.
And then three sixteen oh sixty-five is the cost, the interest, right?
Uh, yeah, you're looking on, on the page three.
Page one.
Well, turn to page three. Turn to page three, there's an interest call I'm totaling up there, 303,000 total interest. So yeah.
Let's see, eight eighteen.
Don't worry yet now.
She's on page three.
Yeah, that is.
Eight eighteen is the total principal plus interest added together.
Oh, eight eighteen is the total total.
Right.
Right.
Principal plus interest paid back.
Do we have a, have a fund that's named project construction company that we're going to put this in, or?
I think I just do that in there just as a placeholder for whatever you want to use your money for.
Okay. Just wanted to leave you around. Anyone?
Well, Jeff will have a special place for this thing.
Well, it'll, it'll, it'll go right back out as soon as.
Yes, yeah.
We'll have, we'll have to pay those, we'll have to pay the, the property owner and then.
But then it'll be like 25,000 to go over for next year for the first payment.
But it'll have to be a special account.
Yeah, she'll, she'll have that segregated.
Okay.
Good question, sir. Good question. Retention.
Well, I'll make a motion approving the bid for the purchase taxable general obligation bond, series 2003.
It'd be a motion approving Central State's bank's bid, correct? You better put, okay, yeah.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry. You want to restate it? Or, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, second.
Moving to second. Is there any further discussion on it? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize an ordinance providing for the issuance of taxable general obligation bond, series 2023, of the City of Arkansas, Kansas City, Kansas.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Dinger?
No.
Mr. Jennings?
Let's see, aye or yes?
I'm just kidding.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Sopen?
Yes.
And then item number three is the resolution authorizing directing the sale, delivery of taxable obligation, taxable general obligation bond, series 2023, to the City of Arkansas, Kansas City.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize and direct the sale and delivery of taxable general obligation bond, series 2023, to the City of Arkansas, Kansas City, Kansas.
Second.
Moving to second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Our EMS department, item number one, is a resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Authorizing the City of Arkansas, Kansas City to purchase a 2026 E450 for ambulance from emergency medical medical services supply Osage ambulances of Jefferson City, Missouri, for an amount not to exceed 300,033 dollars and sixty-six. Very briefly, far from us. Any questions for me?
Well, it's in, it's in our budget for 2026, right?
No.
Great.
Not currently. Jennifer was going to check on encumbering some funds at one time, but I don't think that went through. This ambulance will replace a 2014 ambulance, and we won't be able to take possession of this one until 2026 by either of the vendors that we got bids from. It's taken two years for an ambulance build. It's replacing an ambulance that's already been remounted. And once you start remounting more than once, you start running into electrical issues and other problems because the technology is different. So.
So when, when will the payment be?
Twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so we got 2026.
Twenty-six.
Okay.
But if we don't get our order in now, it's, it's taking two years to build. So we would expect in the spring of 2026.
And she'll be able to, be able to find those funds or? Okay.
I think we budgeted for it next year.
Yeah, we'll have to encumber it next year. We won't, we won't expend it, but what, once the order goes in, we'll have to encumber the funds. And then we won't, we won't spend them until, till the angle.
So delivery, yeah, basically.
I did want to point out one thing. We didn't, I didn't have them include a trading value because I believe you can get more if you sell the current ambulance on Purple Way. Because the mo, the one vendor did include a trading value of 7,500.
That's it?
That's it. I think you can get more than that on Purple Way.
Yes, I agree.
And the, the agenda says to twenty, replace the current 2022, but it's a 2014.
Twenty twenty, it should be replacing the 2014.
Fourteen, all right.
And it will be replaced.
I just want to make sure that was right.
Yeah, I seen that. I just saw that actually a few minutes ago.
Well, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the City of Arkansas, Kansas City to purchase a 2026 E450 for ambulance from emergency medical services supply Osage ambulances of Jefferson City, Missouri, for an amount not to exceed 321,033 dollars and sixty-one cents.
I'll second that.
Yes, been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Not, proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, item number two is a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas, Kansas City to execute a professional services agreement with Dr. Patrick T. Blaschard as medical director, increasing his salary by 5%, repealing all previous contracts. Any questions for that one? We have a, given Dr. Blaschard, he's been our medical director, I think that's been for the past two years prior to that. He's been our medical director since April of 2011. Prior to, two years ago, he did it as volunteer, volunteer, but because of the requirements for a medical director now, we felt like we should give him something for his time because he does devote a lot of time to our department. So cost of living and his, his insurances and stuff is requiring more and more for him, so we thought we could look into giving him a 5% raise.
For those of us who don't understand what his duties are, can you kind of explain?
He does a lot of education for us. We actually have to have, there's two things you have to have to practice as an EMS provider in the state of Kansas. You have to have a set of protocols approved by a medical director and the state, and you have to have a supervising physician. So let's see, he is responsible for what we do.
So every EMS worker works under his license?
Yes, sir.
And he can hire and fire, I mean, or?
He doesn't hire and fire, but he can choose not to supervise someone.
Okay.
If he chooses, because that's, if he feels.
His license.
If he feels his liability, he has.
Because it's on his license.
Right. His credential is an endorsement to the first three supervising, so.
Without that, without a supervising physician, you cannot have an ambulance service.
Thank you. Thank, let's people know what, what he really does.
I probably didn't work that well, but he does give us a lot of his time.
Well, that being said, I'll make a motion, a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas, Kansas City to execute a professional service agreement with Dr. Patrick T. Blaschard as medical director, increasing his salary from 5% and repealing all previous contracts.
Second.
Okay.
Moving to second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Will you send him that contract to be signed? Yes. Thank you. So next is the police department. And item number one is an ordinance amending chapter two, article, I'm on board, of the Arkansas City Municipal Code modifying section 2-279 to incorporate financial responsibility to the provisions of a chief of police as required by national accreditation standards and repealing ordinance 2021-09-4539. Did you need some information?
That's okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Mary Burr, Police Chief. So the item before you tonight is just adding some wording to an existing ordinance that has to do with describing the responsibilities of the police chief. And I would correct, instead of national standards, it is a state accreditation standard. As you know, we're currently going through the Kansas law enforcement accreditation program. As part of that program, it's very specific about some wording that has to do with fiscal responsibility for the department. So we're making that, that recommendation to change the ordinance so we have that as a proof of compliance for that standard. I would add on, when we speak about the accreditation program, and I'll brag on Lieutenant Leglider here real quickly. He's done a fantastic job with that program. In fact, we, we hosted the accreditation, the state accreditation program manager within the last couple of months, and she conducted an onsite assessment. And she said that we scored the highest of any department she had assessed to that point. So credit to, to his work in the accreditation program that we're currently seeking. I believe that we are probably going to be the first agency in the state that is not a nationally accredited agency to be, to achieve that. So our timeline, we're looking probably January to February of being able to achieve that, that state recognition for the accreditation program. So I couldn't be prouder of Lieutenant Leglider and, and all the work that's going in to that program across street.
This is basically just, you're already doing this. It's just a job, basically another responsibility you're doing is going to just state that you're doing it based on me.
Right, exactly. It's, it's duties that.
You're already doing, yeah.
Police chief since probably the beginning of time, beginning of the police department. It's just putting the wording into that ordinance so that way we can show.
It's in our policy.
Program that it is in the ordinance that that responsibility falls to the police chief.
City Attorney, why is that a roll call vote?
It's the ordinance.
The ordinance.
It is an ordinance. It's a change of.
So as, so you're already doing it?
Yes.
So I had to amend the ordinance to place that wording in there. So when they send that ordinance in to the state for the accreditation piece, it's one of the requirements that they look for, and that was just not in there. And so they were having to come up with a way to prove that we have some sort of writing that, that the chief is responsible for.
Yeah, and to explain that piece, so the standards, there are like 167 standards that we have to meet to be able to achieve accreditation, and we have to prove that we're doing all of those things. So it could be something as simple as some, like a written ordinance to prove that the police chief has the responsibility for fiscal responsibility of the department. But it could be, you know, a litany of other things that we prove that we're doing to meet those standards.
Okay. No, I knew it was an ordinance. I was.
Thank you very much.
First of all, first off, I'd like to say thanks to you and Officer Leglider, Lieutenant Leglider, for your hard work for all you've done with the police department. This isn't something they're already doing. I mean, he's already doing his own budget, so it's nothing, it's not changing anything. So with that being said, let's see if I can do this without screwing this one up. Make a motion that they're authorized an ordinance amending chapter two, article four of the City of Arkansas, Kansas City Municipal Code modifying, modifying section 2-279 to incorporate financial responsibilities to the provisions for a chief of police as required by state accreditation standards and repealing ordinance 2021-09-4539.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. I just want to clarify one thing.
Roll call vote.
I want to clarify one thing. And you said state, and it says here national. Does that make a difference?
He said it because he said state.
You gotta correct it to state.
Okay, all right. I just want to be absolutely sure we get it right. Is there any further discussion on this? If not, it is a roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Motion carried. I ask for discussion by city commissioners. We have been approached by more than one developer where some property, uh, just bringing this out in the open that it is, it's been brought before us to let people know, uh, we're not here to make a vote or anything like that. Uh, I think it's the consensus of most of the members here that there has to be more study done on it and more things going forward. So, saying that, is there anything else from the commissioners?
I have one item, and that is, um, a couple of people got ahold of me about, give me one second. I think it's B and Madison where there's a stoplight. And the school.
B and Madison.
B and Madison. And the, uh, the school is no longer there, but I made some calls. Um, they wanted to know why we couldn't take out the stoplight and take out the school, um, signs. The school signs are there because they still do pickup there, even though they don't do head start in that building anymore. So that's why the school signs are still there. And then, um, but they are interested in knowing if we could take out the stoplight at B and Madison. I have no idea, so, uh, just brought it up because they asked me to.
Yeah, same gentleman chatted with me last evening after the forum, were expressing similar, well, basically said the same thing, so.
Do we still have that committee, uh, traffic safety, traffic safety thing?
Yes, it just hasn't been quite.
That might be something to talk about. You know, I mean, seriously.
Okay, we'll, uh, do some research and bring some information back to y'all.
Thank you.
And I have a question. On Madison, between B and C, pretty close to that stoplight, had a water leak. That water leak has been there well over four months. We also have one down on Fillmore that's been there, I know, for two months. Are those in, in the near future?
Yeah, I, so the one on Fillmore I didn't know about, um, I, I haven't mentioned the one there on Madison, um, and they were, other things were taking priority over that, but we have management meeting in the morning, and so I will mention that to them and remind them about that.
Well, the one down on, um, Fillmore is running about three blocks, and it hits Summit Street right there. And there's a pretty good puddle. Or if that goes to freezing, that might be a little problem. Anything else from the commissioners?
Uh, I have nothing so profound, uh, but I think important. Unless you guys did that before I got here. During our study session on last Friday, we had a citizen who desired to come and visit with either the governing body or the city manager, that citizen walked into the office in obvious, uh, medical distress. And I thought it prudent to, uh, formally commend both our Director of Finance, Jennifer Waggoner, and our, what's her title? Jerry?
EMS Director.
EMS Director for their, uh, uh, astute awareness of the, of the citizen and their readiness. We were getting ready to talk about this ambulance thing, and all of a sudden their eyes zeroed in on that particular citizen, and they immediately began to move, and it was not just the medical, uh, attention that they gave, but the citizen was gravely concerned that if they needed to be transported to the hospital. She was like, I don't, I don't want to build, I don't want to build. And they said, don't worry about that. Let's, don't worry about the bill. You won't be billed if we call them, have them come over and check you out. So they not only provided medical attention, but I, I was really impressed with their concern for her anxiety about whether or not this was going to turn into some unexpected. So their, their service, their bedside office, uh, deportment was commendable also. I think that we should maybe convey, uh, formally, I, maybe, maybe the mayor could write a life little note and send it to them and say, thank you for leaping into action in that situation. It's my thoughts.
Yes, sir, for bringing that up. Should have been taken care of soon. Anything else from the commissioners? If not, do we have someone signed up to speak?
So Jerry Straley, I'd like to talk about the hospital land for a second.
I'm not here to attack anybody. I'm sorry if I raised my voice earlier, but I'm very passionate in the community that I live in. Three or four years ago, this city commission, maybe not every one of you, promised the citizens of this city a master plan for Wilson Park. Great idea. Live Bird, Wrex Center, Community Center, whatever. Now, you've been approached, and even though here, I was hoping to ask you a few questions. I brought today's newspaper and highlighted whatever one of you that worked at the meeting said Friday. I was informed this morning that anybody could have attended the Friday meetings. I did not know that. I thought it was just city commission meetings. So I accused, and I'm sorry for this, of you during a backdoor meeting with Mr. Seibert, or Seibert, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm new to the area, nine years here, but. What happened to the master plan? What happened? Was any of you guys vote, vote for it? It got big old headlines in the paper, city commission approves. Were you guys not here? None of you guys were here.
My term only goes back two years, so.
That was about, that was about nine years ago that, um.
Well, I've only been here, I, so.
That was introduced.
I don't think the master plan concept's been taken away. I think it would be something, it's one of those long-term visions that this, we would like to do, however costs come into.
Well, I'm glad to see that you're not giving away the land.
Well, and I think the master plan is still a part of, and I think that's why Mayor Spillman said, we're still, there's no sell of the land right now because there's no, what she said tonight, because there's a lot of ideas still out there, and there's a lot of other things that could play into it, and so I don't think anyone knows at this time what it is. I, for one, was not wanting to develop a residential at the time. That was my take, just because there is a master plan, and there are some people passionate about it. So with that being said, I think we still, all five of us, along with, if it doesn't work till next year, new commission, at least one new commission next year will be looking at it. So I don't think anything's been decided yet on the future, but the master plan is still one idea out there. There could be others, and I think that's what the commission, whether it's this commission or next year's commission, which would have one new member, at least one new member, so.
Can you quote it as saying, we need more housing? How much housing does the city need? We got housing to the north. I drove down Skyline Drive for the first time, actually the first time ever, all the way out, brand new houses, I didn't know. Or duplexes.
Well, I.
Yeah, that's a project.
We got a hundred and twenty thousand dollar mobile homes that you guys approved. It's going in. I don't know who's going to buy those. That's not, none of my business.
To the wa, the data walk, we're about three hundred homes short of what we need. I don't know where that information came from. I'm just telling you that's what we have.
Well, I talked to.
And what I said was, the, it has been a highlight of the commission to have housing.
This commission has, is doing what it can to, whether it be new houses, remodeling, I mean, there's been, there's been incentives with the neighborhoods that put money into houses that can be saved, those, I mean, this commission has made it an effort, which commission you're saying, to get houses either looking nice again, or new houses for citizens, because, I mean, you've driven through town, like you've stated, there's some houses that just can't be saved again. Or you may like this house, but the houses on each side of it are abandoned or need to be torn down, so you don't want to, you want somewhere else to live. So there's a lot of moving parts to that, but I think that's been our underlying message, as at least a consensus for the majority of the two or three, four years has been housing, and it still needs, is, related to the data, an issue, or.
I have an ex landlord that I rented for seven years. I called him today. He has twenty-five houses in the city. Right now, he cannot rent, cannot rent. Nobody wants it.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Those other houses, those other landlords got the same problem. Mr. Seibert, or Seibert.
Mayor, I would like to remind you that his three minutes are.
Yeah, your three minutes are up.
Well, okay, I'll close real fast. And Seibert, in the beginning, when you guys want to sell somebody else, he's pulling to it. Now he's off board because he wants to buy it. I'm glad to see your table on it, because I think the election in November will decide the fate of three of you guys. I've been out, well, two, I've been out every day, cameras in the neighborhood, and trying to get rid of you.
That's not.
I'd love to see you run, sir.
I will try to take Mr. Ward, or Miss Spillman's class, when they run.
The next on the list, M, N, M, and M, that's a really backwards place, and M I or something.
So old, sitting in the corner. I have a mayor, commissioners, just going to take a second. I've been, I've had the, this is my voice too. I've had the privilege of being your, your city judge for, uh, the thirty-three years, ten months, and seventeen days. And, uh, I've literally admitted of it, although there was a few times that I wasn't so sure. I'm here now because in my little, little time that I spend at McDonald's and the donut shop, and I probably should spend a whole lot of this time there, I, I hear things, and I, and so as a, as a city judge, uh, I very much want to tell you that, uh, of the six city, uh, managers that I've worked with, Randy Frazier has just done, has done a job. Actually, I can go back to Kirk Freeland who hired me. Uh, he was wonderful. Uh, and, and Randy Frazier has just done a wonderful job. And he's helped us. Anytime I've had a question, I've gone to him, and he's always taken the time for me. And, uh, when he's had a question, he's come in and he's taken the time with it. He's also given us the, the respect, not me, the robe, the respect. Previously, that was a revolving door. We could be in court right here, people right here, that door opens, the city prosecutor, city, we see the arm come out, and I lose my city prosecutor. And there were times that we literally had to stop and wait for her to come back, uh, because the boss had spoken, and he had said, come on in here. And, uh, so it has been a, a joy to work for Randy Frazier. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Uh, no, no one else has signed up with anyone else.
Andy, it's all yours tonight.
Okay, well, he made me blush, so I might have. Just, uh, so some things coming up, uh, I left the flyers on your table, so there's the JB, uh, the Avery Spirit, Community Spirit Award coming up on October twenty-fourth, so, uh, make sure you're there. I think they always have some good cookies and, uh, and honor a great citizen of the community. Uh, there will be a rail, um, a passenger rail Zoom meeting on November eighth, kind of giving a date on where we're at on that. And then there is a local elected reception in Wichita on November fourth, that's part of the REAP group. Uh, so all the, um, South Central Kansas elected officials will be invited to this, and so you can, kind of just a nice way to honor the elected officials in the local area. Coming up at a next meeting, um, I have a contract, uh, from, uh, a company that's purchasing some property, um, next, kind of near the, um, the East Mill, so I have, uh, for you guys to consider next meeting. We'll also have a, a resolution, this will be from Alfredo's Housing Group, a resolution, uh, to support a tax credit application for housing, that, uh, part of their financing that they're working on, um, on their, on the project, uh, down in the Sleet Edition. One of the things, uh, at the LKM conference, kind of on the housing, um, I sit in on a, uh, MIH housing, um, program, and they are opening, or they're releasing a revolving loan through the Kansas Housing Resource Corp. for housing. So that'll be kind of a second mile, um, financing for developers, um, they take second position. So that's just another tool that, uh, that when they get all the, the rules put in place, that we can make sure that our local developers are aware of, just, you know, again, um, layering up all the different things that the programs the state has to offer can really help put together some housing projects in the future. And then on the travel center, um, we, I shared this with you guys Friday, but they have kind of the drawing of what's going to look like, and, uh, they're in the final, um, final weeks of, uh, of the civil drawings for utilities. Um, they're, they're engaged with the energy and Kansas gas on getting those, those put together. They, uh, they are also kind of winding up their mechanical, electric, and plumbing engineering. That should be, all be done this next week for their, for their building, and then they'll be applying for permits quickly for the, to start construction with, uh, neighborhood services upstairs. So that's all starting to come together. We should start seeing some dirt moving and still going up here in the near future, so. And that's what I got.
What do you found out about going underneath the railroad track, that sewer line from the?
We, uh, we're still waiting on Chris, uh, mine, uh, we're finished, we, uh, we have, uh, the easements and this, um, the, uh, just property description for partial, part of that now, so we can start working with Arc City Greenhouses on an easement. Um, and then he's going to finish up, uh, the work under, that we need to do, kind of identifying the location underneath the railroad tracks so that we can start on that. So, um, I don't have a good update on that one yet, but it's going to have to happen here pretty soon, so.
Move on to executive session.
We pass into executive session to discuss the city manager's contract, KSA seven five, uh, four three, one nine, B one. Personnel matters, non-직.
So this one will do, uh, the motion.
Well, how much time, how much time do we?
Well, we never seem to be able to do it, think we're going to, so give us five extra.
Okay, perfect. Uh, I would move that we enter into an executive session, uh, pursuant to KSA seven five four three, one, dash, four three one nine, B, dash, one, paragraph one. Personnel matters, non-elected personnel to discuss city manager's contract. Did I do that well enough?
For a period of time.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got, I was so enamored with having read that. For a period of time, uh, excuse me, for thirty minutes, thirty minutes, thirty minutes. That's my add in five. I added five.
And who's, you will be in that session?
Who do we?
Attorney and commissioners, or non-attorney?
Sure. Let's take the city tur, uh, join us.
Is it, is it Schwartz?
Will be legal determinations though, or do you just need to talk?
I think it's probably going to be kind of what we discussed the last time, continuance of it, plus.
I'm just asking that. I'll do what your wishes are, of course.
Yes, please join us for, they're part of the motion, quoting the city attorney.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This conference will now be recorded.
Moving us back in fashion.
Madam Mayor, I would like to, uh, make a motion that we, um, express our intent to enter into a contract renewal, term of two years, uh, with the city manager for his services, professional services.
services, contingent upon successful negotiation of the details between the governing body city manager and the guidance of the city attorney. And I make, thank you for letting me make that motion, and I'm going to flag that again and say, I think probably the medal of our city manager demonstrated in the last budgeting cycle where we, the governing body, intimated that we were going to exceed R and R, allowed staff to spend several months planning a budget, and then when it came down to crunch time, kind of pulled the carpet, and city manager done a yeoman's job, I think, of bringing the department heads together, making some really tough decisions, notifying our external partners of some changes to what they expected from the municipality in terms of supportive funding, and nobody's thrown a rock through the window yet, so I think he did it in a very tactical way. That's the foundation of my motion.
I'll second that motion.
It is been moved in second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.